Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the December 13, 2023, meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business is roll call. It's done electronically. I will declare a quorum as present. Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. At this time, I ask you to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we have none. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting. Looking at item A, November 21, 2023 minutes, and B, the list of claims dated December 7. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing no discussion, questions, or corrections, I'll entertain a motion at this time. Moved by Ms. Rickio. Thank you. Second by Ms. Brol. Thank you both. Any further discussion at this point? Seeing none, please proceed to vote.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. We'll move on to our audience comments at this point. Agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer shall limit speaking time to non-agenda items to one minute, and those items, notice on the agenda, to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak? All right. We do have two people. We'll start with the agenda item first because we do have a agenda item speaker and then a non-agenda item speaker. Suzie and Ardell, you guys signed up together? Do you each wish to speak? One of you? Okay. Located at 170 Walnut Street, and they are opposed in the rezoning.
There we are.
Yep, if you want to come to the podium, that would be great. Thank you very much. Podium mic's on for you.
Okay. I oppose to the rezoning of 180... Of Chestnut, 180... What is it? Of 187 Walnut Street, 183 Walnut Street, and of the one on Chestnut, 188. Originally, there did stand houses there. The owner of the houses ran them to the ground, did not keep up updating them, and they just kept collecting rent, and then they tore them down, and now they want to make everything business. And I do not approve of that. It is a residential area. We like our street on Walnut Street. It's a nice, quiet street. Do not want any business using Walnut Street for exiting and entering business. So, and if I lived on Chestnut Street, I would not want a parking lot in between the houses. And yeah, everything was residential, was houses, so I think that's the way it should remain.
And I am in particular, when Johnson Street redid and put the bridge, after the bridge, and they redid all of Johnson Street there, I fought to have Walnut Street dead end because we had traffic just zipping down our Walnut Street. One child did get hit, and over the years, several almost got hit coming down there. So I fought for it and won, and I want that street dead end. When they did do it and Wentz had it where you could drive up there, not a straight curb, but a curved one, I talked to them, and they were kind enough to put a gate up so we didn't have to worry about any traffic coming down there. And that's all I'm concerned about, is that keeping Walnut Street dead end. They can exit, there's plenty of exits, onto Hickory and to Johnson Street. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you both very much. We appreciate your time. And Mr. Boda, you're next. A non-agenda item, that is the demerit points discussion this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this moment. I had sent everybody an email. Sure all of you got it. Hope you've all been able to open up the attachment. I received demerit points for something that doesn't make sense. We take serious safety in our bar. To get it, to be told by the city attorney and Captain Han in a meeting I had, I had almost a tor-a-long meeting, that yes, you did everything right, but no, we're not going to take these points away, makes absolutely no sense. We were proactive. Nothing unfolded in our bar that would suggest there was a loss of control. None whatsoever. We'd just seen something that didn't look right. We acted on it. We called the police out of concern for what could have happened. And then it unfolded that someone did get threatened by this guy in our bar. We provided all the evidence needed. We did our job right, but yep, now we got 85 demerit points. There's something wrong with this system. We need to fix this. This isn't building a positive relationship between us and the police force, and it doesn't make us want to ever call in again. And I don't want that position. I want public safety. I've always been on the same page with the police department up to now. This is the first time since 2017 I've ever received demerit points. And this setup I have at Alheffy's is the mildest setup I've ever had. They're easy to work with. We have almost no trouble in there. And to get it now, it just doesn't make sense.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boda. Appreciate your comments. Have a Merry Christmas, everybody. And I believe that concludes our audience comments for this evening. So with that being said, let's move on to action items for tonight. We'll begin with action item A, that's Resolution 9096, a resolution approving and confirming the election officials for the 2024-2025 election cycle. Ms. Hefter, our city clerk has that introduction for us.
Thank you, President Heisler. State statutes require the governing body appoint election officials for a two-year term. This term will be from January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2025. Election officials are required to attend training within this two-year cycle. The list provided to you includes party recommendations along with reappointments. The city of Fond du Lac is fortunate to have dedicated election officials that work to ensure that our elections are fair, accessible, and transparent. Thank you for recognizing that they provide a valuable service to our community with the recent budget increase in their pay. I would be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of these appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Hefter. Questions for Ms. Hefter at this point? Go for it.
Ms. Hefter, do we, are we lucky to have a surfeit of volunteers to do this, or are we always scrambling to find election officials, or what?
We are lucky to actually have a lot of alternate people on the list. However, we do have a lot of snowbirds, so to have those alternate people to cover for those positions is very helpful.
But so far, you've not had difficulty recruiting and retaining election officials?
Not too much, no. We've been very, very lucky.
Thank you.
Excellent. Further questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing no further questions, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Zimmerman. Is there a second? Second, thank you very much, Ms. Rickio. And any further discussion at this point? Seeing none, I will, we'll proceed to vote at this time. With Mr. Cassidy confirming, that passes unanimously. We move on to Resolution 9097. That is a resolution making reappointments to the downtown Fond du Lac Partnership Board. Mr. Moore has that introduction for us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a reappointment for Mr. Sam Mar to the DFP Board. And usually, I don't editorialize, but we may be nominating the happiest man in the city because he was able to move his building without slipping off the rails last week. So anyways, he has served a long time with the DFP on numerous occasions and recommend his reappointment.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Moore from council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion at this time. 9097, so moved by Mr. Schusler, seconded by Mr. Mullen. Thank you both. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And Mr. Cassidy confirms, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to Resolution 9098. That's a resolution making appointments as humane officers. Our city attorney, Ms. Hoffman, has that introduction for us.
Thank you, President Heisler. We have, our three rescues are being appointed as humane officers. So it's Critter Junction, Sandy Paws, and Lucky Dog. The three rescues will be our humane officers for 2024. We also have a contract with the Humane Society as a animal control facility, which is the contract that they asked for. They did not, they were not interested in being a humane officer. So we've managed to contract with all of them in ways that they are happy with and we feel are fair, and I believe we're going to have a good year for 2024.
Great to hear. Thanks, Ms. Hoffman. Let's go to Mr. Cassidy first with questions.
Just a clarification. When you say humane officers and then you're naming a organization, I'm looking for a person, not a...
Correct, which, if Maggie wants to pull up the resolution, we do name their chief operating officers for each of the three rescues, so it is, it's actual people.
Oh, okay. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Ms. Rickio.
Yes, thank you. Excellent job. It's been a year for you all in these negotiations years, so... But just for clarification, and I've read all the things that came to us as council members and in the city, over the radio and the paper and all that. Is the difference between the Humane Society and the three rescues, like, when I see that one of the rescues has a cat or a dog on a four-day hold, what does that mean? What happens to that animal after four days?
If the owner doesn't claim it, then the animal can be adopted, which is the same for both the Humane Society and for the rescues, so it's the same.
Well, do the three rescues hold on to these animals as long as the Humane Society does, or do they take them to the Humane Society after the four-day hold?
No, no, they would hold on to them.
What's a four-day hold?
It's, it's under the Wisconsin statute. When an animal is found, either as a stray or abandoned, it gives a chance for the owner to come back and reclaim it.
And then, so is the only difference from, between the Humane Society contract and the three contracts with the rescues, and just honestly correct me if I'm wrong, because there's been so much information and a lot of disinformation, not from your office, but publicly, is one of the only differences is between the three rescues will go and pick up an animal at midnight on Sunday, and the Humane Society won't do that? Is that the difference?
That's correct. Again, they are not being named as humane officers, so they aren't going to go out. Animals can be brought into them, but they are not going to go out and pick up animals.
Right, the Humane Society building is still open for the police to come?
Correct.
And drop off an animal?
Or a citizen. If you have a stray, you don't know what to do with, you can bring it to the Humane Society.
I don't have access to the building at midnight on a Sunday.
Well, no, correct, during, when their hours are open.
Right.
Otherwise, you would call dispatch, and they will connect you with one of the rescues.
Okay, so when a citizen calls dispatch, how do they know to tell me to go to Critter Junction or she, one of the other, how do they pick in order who's going to go out and get that animal tonight?
They've worked out a system amongst the three of them about how they handle that.
Okay.
And quite frankly, it needs to be flexible, and it is, but it's working, so...
And they're all cooperating, because that's obvious. So the last question, a clarification. So Sandy Paws, Critter Junction, and Lucky Dog, they hold on to animals indefinitely as long as the Humane Society does?
Yes.
Great, good job all year. Thank you.
Anyone else from council with questions? I just want to thank everyone involved in the process, because it was taking us a while to get to where we are, and it takes a lot of people and a lot of time and a lot of patience and all that sort of stuff. It's great to have a positive outcome to what was a difficult situation to navigate for a while, so thank you all very, very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Mullen for 9098. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Cassidy. Thank you both. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Schusler affirmed, it is passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. And now we're on to ordinance number 3779. That's an ordinance rezoning land from R1, which is a single-family residential district, and C2, a general business district, to entirely C2, which is a general business district that is located at 187 Walnut Street. And the introduction for this and the others that are on our action items tonight is by our community development director, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Heisler. So as you're aware, every single parcel within this city has a zoning designation. You're either commercial, residential, or industrial. Every parcel. And so from time to time, it's, you know, appropriate to revisit what those zonings are, and sometimes the applicant is looking to have their property rezoned. And in this case, the property owner that owns the three properties that are listed has requested a rezoning from, in this case, that your first one is actually zoned, two different zones. It's what we call split zoning. We don't like that. That's bad zoning, because if you have a parcel in half, those are two distinctly different uses, commercial and residential, they don't go together on the same property well. But it's not unusual for commercial and residential to bobble up against each other. We have quite a few areas within the city where commercials along major commercial corridors, like Johnson Street, Fond du Lac Avenue, with residential behind. And so in this instance, we are looking to have the property rezoned from a split zoning to entirely commercial. So the property already has some commercial, it's just basically rezoning the other half of the parcel to commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Questions from council? We'll start with Mr. Cassidy.
So if, say this is, doesn't pass, what happens to the businesses that are there?
There is no business there. Right now, it's a vacant lot.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thanks.
Up next, I've got Mr. Schusler.
MO refers to protection for adjoining residential properties. What form do those take?
So within the zoning code, the zoning code outlines in detail setbacks for parking lots, landscape screening requirements when parking area is a butt next to a residential district, light pole height, anything that you can imagine as relates to commercial development when it's within so many feet of a residential, those restrictions are more stringent than when commercial butts up against commercial.
Is that conditional use process or some other?
Nope, it's actually outlined in the zoning code. So there is no special use permit or anything else. It's actually in the code. It's what has to be adhered to.
How do you come up with the specifics if there's no conditional use process? How do you?
Because it's in the code. It says within, if commercial property is within 200 feet of a residential district, you know, the setback is this, lighting pole height has to be this. So there's no need for any kind of conditions because it's detailed in the zoning code.
Even with the landscaping and the...
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Schusler. Ms. Brol, you're up next.
Thanks, and sorry, this is what I sound like. I feel fine, but I'm sorry you have to listen to this, but... So my question actually was going to be some of what Mr. Schusler asked. So my other question is, would there be driveways onto either Chestnut Street or Walnut Street potentially with any development that could happen? Or would, are there any requirements that they would have to be, say, on Johnson or Hickory?
Right now, the, if, the part, there's several parcels here. So there's already some existing parcels that are already zoned commercial, and then there's these three other parcels. In order for this actually to be developed, all those parcels have to be combined. We don't allow commercial development to cross over property lines. In addition, there's a easement where we have city water and city sewer that still extends as if Walnut goes all the way across. So that also poses an additional limitation on where development can occur on the property. So given that all the parcels have to be combined, the, there can be limitations to where the driveway access occurs. And so hearing the concerns regarding Walnut Street at the planning commission, that's already been discussed with our engineering department.
Okay. Is there anything in the zoning code that limits where driveways specifically can be put in?
Driveways are more under the jurisdiction of engineering, not so much in the zoning code. But because there is a driveway access off of Hickory and off of Johnson, we can say that that's where the traffic needs to go, and we can limit the access onto Walnut.
Okay. And then, so is it that there's going to be a single owner of the parcels that are already commercial, and then additionally, these?
All these all parcels are all owned by the same person.
Okay.
And so what this is, is anticipation of a potential commercial development and kind of cleaning up some, you know, incorrect zoning where there's the split parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brol. Ms. Rickio.
Yes, thank you. To build on that last response, you said that it's already been put back to the planning commission, or they've addressed it, where the driveways are going to be?
No.
And then you said we can direct it to Hickory or Johnson. You're saying you can, but will you?
Through the site plan review process, we can, yes. We need to see what the development is. There's no site plan in front of us. So there may not even be a request to do so. So, you know, until there's something in front of us to react to, you know, I'm not going to, there's no need for us to say that, yes, we'll have access onto Walnut Street.
Similarly, though, without me having a picture in front of me about where these driveways are going to be, it's hard for me to vote. It seems premature to vote on this. In my, in my opinion, and I'm the one speaking, I want, I want to see, because these are residential neighborhoods. I realize there's some commercial mixed around in that a little bit, but I'd want to see more of the plan in front of me before I really feel comfortable approving it. But also, it's my first issue before Ms. Brol. Oh, that mixed lot now, that mixed zone now? You said the one lot, the one half, a part of that is empty? Is there a house on the other part of it?
No, all the lots are vacant.
Even the mixed one?
Yes.
But the mixed one has got the two zones?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me right now. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen.
My, your last answer just clarified it. There are no homes that are going to be demolished or any...
No. These are all vacant.
I mean, I looked at the plat, and it was kind of very busy in that small area, there were a lot of lines. So it was kind of hard to tell. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mullen. Any further questions for Ms. Benson on this, or discussion from council? Okay, and as a reminder, we've got, we've got three separate ordinances to discuss. So at this point, I would take a, I would entertain a motion on 3779. So moved by Mr. Mullen. Second by Mr. Cassidy. Thank you both. Further discussion at this point? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes with all but Ms. Rickio in the affirmative. We'll move on to 3780. Similar situation, the ordinance rezoning land from R1, single-family residential district, and C2, general business district, to entirely C2. That's at 188 Chestnut Street. Ms. Benson, anything to add over that?
No.
And with that, any further questions for Ms. Benson on 3780? Ms. Rickio.
I noticed that these addresses are 182 Walnut, no, 187 Walnut and 183 Walnut. What's in between those two addresses?
There's nothing.
It goes from 183 to 187?
Yes. If you look at the map, you can see where the, how the addressing, the parcels are next to each other.
Okay, so, like I'm...
Maggie, can you pull up the map?
Thanks, Maggie.
Familiar with both Chestnut and Walnut? But you... And this is obviously the corner where Wentz was, right?
Yeah, keep going. So can you zoom in, Maggie? Sorry. Right, yep, you're at the top right there. Oh, keep going. And then scroll down. So there you can see at the, you know, upper right-hand corner, so at the northeast corner, you can see 191, 187. So that one was the previous request for rezoning. Here, we're at 188 Chestnut, so that's on the other side. That's the vacant lot there. And then 183 Walnut is just south of 187.
I'm lost. So start up in the...
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Is Walnut Street dead ended now?
Yes.
So I think I still have the floor, but I'm thinking that the objection that the neighborhood is having is whether or not driveways and traffic is ever going to come out Chestnut and Walnut rather than Hickory and Johnson. And as long as we don't know the answer to that, I just think this is a real interference in a really residential neighborhood. I know it's mixed use, but I see it as more residential. That's just my feeling. I just, I wouldn't want the driveway coming out on Walnut or Chestnut if I lived there either. Commercial traffic, very short street.
Thank you, Ms. Rickio. Mr. Zimmerman, you're up.
I guess just a clarifying question, because I'm Mr. of the layman's terms here. So we're just cleaning up the zoning is all we're doing here tonight, correct?
Yeah, so for the, for the two is cleaning up the zoning, because 187 and 188 Chestnut, both of those have split zoning. 183 is entirely zoned residential, whereas across the street at 185, that's already zoned commercial. So it's really creating a more consistent commercial line at that corner of Hickory and Johnson for commercial.
To help us fellow council members here, we're cleaning up some zoning, but there's no plans in front of us for anything. We're just strictly working on the zoning right now, and we don't worry about the other portion till after, maybe there's something even going in. Okay, I'm, I'm cool. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Zimmerman. Any further questions for Ms. Benson? And just as a point of clarification, we're on 3780. That's the ordinance that we're at right now. Ms. Rickio, your second opportunity?
Yes. I understand we're just cleaning up the zoning tonight. I understand that. But we're opening the door then for commercial development in that residential neighborhood, and that would be the ultimate outcome of this decision we make tonight. This is more than just housekeeping, in my opinion. It's a setting in the future.
Thanks, Ms. Rickio. Anything else further from council? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion at this time. 3780 moved by Mr. Mullen. I need a second for that. Second by Ms. Brol. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes with Ms. Rickio opposed and the rest in the affirmative. And now we're on to 3781. We've discussed this also as part of this overall discussion, but this is the ordinance rezoning land from R1, which is that single-family residential district, to C2, which is a general business district. This is specifically at 183 Walnut Street. And Ms. Benson, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you much. All right, at this point, any further questions from council or Ms. Benson? Ms. Rickio.
Yeah, I understand the importance of economic development and supporting businesses. I also know the importance of housing and affordable housing. And there aren't a ton of lots in the city. Everything doesn't have to be apartment buildings that are built. These would be, and on that little cul-de-sac there, those would be nice lots for somebody to build a nice, better home. And so I hate taking potential housing lots off the market and making them commercial when we, we do have other commercial properties available up and down Johnson Street in addition to other places, but we have a dearth of single-family home lots that aren't, you know, on the edges of town and $150,000 for a lot. So, and I've seen a couple lots in the city in this past six months or so, stuck in little off-the-way neighborhoods, or maybe somebody is selling off their big yard and making it a separate one, or people have built homes there. And I think that's a tax value and a quality of life value, too. So I think those properties that are there, listed residential, are gold for homeowners. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Rickio. Any further comments from council or questions for Ms. Benson? Seeing none of those, at this time, I will entertain a motion for 3781. Seeing none of those, at this time, I will entertain a motion for 3781. 3781 so moved by Mr. Mullen, seconded by me. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes with Mr., with Ms. Rickio and Mr. Schussler opposed. Thank you all. And that concludes our action items for this evening. Thank you again, Ms. Benson. And now we'll move on to our city year in view presented by our city manager, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. And because I might forget to say it at the end, I hope everybody has a nice holiday. This is our last meeting of the year. And I've got about three hours worth of information here, which has been distilled down from Mr. Cassidy, I know you're a patient man, but I won't, I won't test your patience that much. So we've distilled it down and I, what I wanted to do is just celebrate some, some goodness and talk about a couple of issues to plant some seeds with you to see if you'd like to circle back with those after the first of the year to talk about those. So let's jump right in. And I always like to talk about our people. Here are, is our leadership team. They're the ones who lead and manage our 314 full-time employees and a varying amount of part-time employees depending on the time of year. And what I'm going to describe to you is what they've been doing over the past year that's noteworthy and what they will be doing in 2024. And by the way, if throughout this you have any questions, please just feel free to jump in. Next, please. So here's five points that I wanted you to take a look at as we close out the year. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the real estate values because it's really quite interesting. It's both a good news story and a tough story depending on whether you're an owner or a buyer. And we've had a great year in our hospitality industry. We will have broken through a million dollars in room tax. That's a first time in the city of Fond du Lac, so that indicates a lot of business in our hotels. That's a good thing. The downtown vacancy rate remains very low. We've got a couple of areas of interest in the downtown we're going to be working on in 2024 to address a couple of spot vacancies. I'm excited about that. I say likely record sales tax distribution. Ever since sales tax was invoked in Fond du Lac County, each year has exceeded the preceding year in terms of sales tax revenue. It's too early to tell if that's going to be the case in 2023, but it looks like it will be. What that indicates to me is a very vibrant economy because that's what's generating the sales tax revenue. Now, you would also be right in saying, yeah, but we've had a lot of inflation this year. Yes, that's, that's for sure. So there's, there's two things going on there. And then we continue to see low unemployment. Right now, we're at 3%. That, the most recent report through the end of October just popped, so I wanted to share that with you. Next, please. There are five areas, and we can go on, Maggie, that I focus on are what I think of as our five real strategic priorities. And I, I said this to you last year and I'm repeating it, that we have to pay attention to growth. Ms. Rickio, I certainly say hear, hear to what you were talking about with housing development. It's, it's really important because I can make a case that we are competing with all the communities up and down I-41 and in the Fox River for people, for people to grow our city, to grow our economy, and to have an adequate workforce for the future. Here are the five areas that I focus on. Residential development, general improvements that aren't infrastructure-specific, recreation assets, because we know that that's a very, that's a difference maker for people who are thinking about moving to a location. Infrastructure and then operational excellence. And that's a big umbrella that captures a lot of what we do within the organization. Next, please. I'm going to hit some highlights of each one of those five. Many of you were there for the ribbon cutting at the Brook Street apartment. So what you see on the upper right photograph is blight that had been there for many a year. Below that, you, you not only see 62 or a building that houses most of the 62 apartments that were part of that project, but also, you know, the elimination of multi-decade blight. And now we have a property that's producing value for residents, it's providing new housing for the future, and it's eliminated blight. The second point I make on this slide is I wanted to say thanks again for your commitment to help with the creation and your authorization to create TID number 25, that property between FEV and the police department, and then authorizing also the development commitment of up to almost $6 million. That is going to, we hope, generate hundreds, a few hundred residences there. I think that's really important and will certainly improve the use of that property that's been vacant for quite some time. And then I wanted to mention, too, that within our CIP, there are a couple of what are, I think, pretty boring projects. They're utility expansion projects, but they're valued at over $4 million. But the real value is it's going to get utilities from where I consider our side of 151 in an area where we don't have utilities on the other side of 151. And what that's going to do is spur residential development. Because right now, the investment from the private sector required to extend those utilities, it's a deal breaker. It doesn't cash flow the project and it makes housing too expensive in any event. And so we are going to undertake this with the extension of water and wastewater. And then lastly, you know, we have a housing market analysis on, on the brink that will help us understand our housing market even better than we already do in 2024 and 2025. Look at what I highlighted there in yellow because I, this is something you might want to come back to just generally when we talk about a housing and why emphasize it so often. So the number of people has grown significantly over the last 50 years. We're talking between 1970 and 2020 in this case, 34%. But the number of households, in other words, the way we've sort of sliced and diced ourselves into smaller pieces, the number of households has increased by over 80%. That's pretty interesting. That's one of the, the real drivers here for demand that's had such an intense effect on the housing market, not just in Fond du Lac, but around the state. But that, I thought you'd find that pretty interesting because that's significant. We have so many more households, i.e. apartments or houses, occupied by one person than we ever have before. And that's quite a change from when families were so much bigger and so much more consolidated. That's really driven a significant demand for housing. Let's go next, please. This is really interesting. So if you own a home and you've owned it since 2015, you've likely had almost 60% of appreciation in the value of your home in the city of Fond du Lac. That's what this slide is getting at. So if you bought it any time after the market crashed in 2009, you've had a significant gain over 50%. So if you're on the owner's side of, of housing, you're in great shape. Now let's go to the next slide. If you're on the buying side, especially if you're a first-time buyer, for 2023 in the third quarter, this is the National Association of Realtors. So this is not a rinky-dink organization, one of those sort of Google surveys. This is legit. Number one in the entire United States for the price increase year-over-year for sales. I'm not talking about existing homes, but for sales. Fond du Lac metropolitan area was number one in the United States in the third quarter of 2023. That's pretty amazing. And that's why we hear from a lot of first-time homebuyers that they're just having real trouble. Part of that's because, as I've already described, there's a lot more people looking for houses than there used to be, even within sort of like the given population growth. But there's also been growth in the city of Fond du Lac in terms of population. And then during the pandemic, when plywood and other elements of lumber skyrocketed in price and the construction almost locked up, so we have no houses being built, a lot of people wanting houses, and the result is prices have gone up so much. And the value of prices that people own that aren't on the market have gone up so much. I'm telling you all of that because I think you're going to hear more and more about people struggling with trying to afford a home, especially first-time homebuyers who are coming to the city, perhaps employed by the city or by the private sector, obviously, looking for a home and really having a hard time. So Diana and I especially are focused on that. That's, that's one reason why we talk about housing a lot, and that's why it's one of our strategic priorities. So a lot more about this to follow, but I wanted to share these things with you. Next, please. So I alluded to this in the budget because we're making an investment to do a revaluation with our city assessor in 2024. So not going to go into any detail here, other than to say in 2024, there's going to be a lot of work by the city assessor to look at all the properties, all the commercial properties and all the residential properties in the city of Fond du Lac. Because, take note, when you look at your property tax bill, in the upper right corner, it's going to tell you what the assessed ratio is. That ought to be between 90% and 100%, 110% of what the estimated fair market value is. So if your house is $100,000 fair market value, it ought to be between 90 and $100,000, $110,000 in its assessment. Right now, because property values have gone up so much in the last three or four years, we're running at about 75%. So the, all the signs are telling us we need to do a revaluation because what happens is somebody who bought a house in 2019, 2020, they're paying sales, they're paying property tax on the value of the house from 2019, not what they paid for, but what it was valued at at the time. So a revaluation resets that value. What happens in the interim is people are paying, in some cases, an inequitable amount of property tax because we need to sort of re-level everyone from all these variations in, in property values. So that's something that you're not going to see the results of in 2024, but I want you to know that's going on in '24. It's quite an undertaking to do a revaluation. Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Physically going to accomplish that?
Literally, you go out and look. You just.
Hire staff? I mean, we have a small city staff already.
No, our city assessor has not only what they have here in the city, but when they're doing a revaluation, they have employee, we have a, we've outsourced our, our city assessment. So we say city assessor, but there's actually a contractual relationship with those people. We have a number of them who sit upstairs with us, but then they can flex people into the city for an effort like this.
Does that mean like you're going to be inside every home?
No, it's, it's from the outside.
Do you even come inside some of the homes, like as a homeowner?
No, we, we don't need to do that because we know if you've done work on your home by virtue of having drawn a permit. So if, if that has happened, we've already looked at that work to see if it added appreciable value to your home. But otherwise, it's a comparison with the homes in your neighborhood and the neighborhood with other neighborhoods to make sure that everybody is paying sort of a uniformly applicable and, let's say, fair property tax. So it's making sure that the share of property tax for all the homeowners and, and commercial property owners is, is fair. Mm-hmm. Next, please. So next strategic priority, talking about recreation assets. City owns a lot, school district owns a lot, private sector owns a lot. So these are focused on what the city owns. Everything in white is what we have done this year. Lot of really goodness, lot of good things here. Many of you have been out for the ribbon cuttings or the ground breakings. The picture there on the bottom right is a really nice outcome of how the Lighthouse Peninsula has kind of been cleaned up, I think made a lot safer. It's attracted a lot of pedestrians and runners and folks that are out there because there's a place for them to walk. When you look down in the yellow area, these, these are things in the pipeline that are going to start popping out as the winter fall hits in the spring and then in the summer. And I, I'd like to invite everybody, if you haven't been out, to Fraser Point, go out to Fraser Point, take a look at what they're doing with the bridge abutments because there's a lot of work that's gone on sort of behind the scenes to get ready for the Fond du Lac River Bridge that's going to come out, come in next summer. And there'll be a really nice trail system that connects to all the other trails that are already there. And I think that's, that's pretty exciting. And then the entrance road there to Lakeside Parkway, that's going to be a nice improvement, too, to kind of give people smoother access to that side of the bridge because I think it's going to get a lot busier over there once that bridge is put in. So really proud of all of these things, lot of great improvements, obviously a lot of investment, you know, thank you for, you know, recent years and, and this year's investments that you authorized to make all this happen. Next, please. So third strategic priority, this is, this kind of is a, a general area where we're talking about improvements that we are either making as a result of things we know we need to do, things we've heard we ought to be doing, and input from counsel and the public. So right off the bat, we closed three tax increment districts. That's great. That's exactly how the process is supposed to work with the values of those areas increased over time and then, you know, we close those out and return that value to the tax base. That's really great. Something a lot smaller, but a lot more fun. Diane and some associates created this Fondy Flicks program that invited people to come out to the ballfield where the Dogspiders play to, to watch movies last summer, and that was a big hit. We learned a lot about how to manage that with weather and time of day and what kind of movies. And so we're going to turn that into some good lessons learned for this coming year, too. Probably the biggest thing, I wrote you about this a couple of months ago, probably the most gratifying thing, the most exciting thing, was that we ultimately had a smooth handover of the Warming Shelter from the Salvation Army to Holy Family. Two awesome organizations. I'm not here taking credit for it. I'm here take, calling it out. It was a great outcome because tonight, just a few minutes ago, I have no doubt in my mind that they opened the door at the Warming Shelter over in First Ave and people were checking in because it's going to be freezing cold tonight. That's the way it's supposed to work and it's really fantastic that it's, it's gotten off to such a good start in its new location. And I wanted you to know that their plans for the summer, after the Warming Shelter closes in the spring, to do more renovations inside because they did some already, but they're going to do more after this first season to really sort of tailor it, tailor that building to the long-term solution for the Warming Shelter. So that's a great outcome. And then that graphic there I've put is just really exciting because Riverfront Redevelopment Plan, et cetera, and, and North Main, you know, I think we've, although we haven't done anything other than the plans, we've authorized some money thanks to you. And so now we're getting ready to start on what I think is going to be about a 10-year journey to really have some significant improvements undertaken in these two areas. So thanks for that. You can't get to where you're going if you don't start. And so that's, that's where those are. And it's great to know we've got so much money that's already allocated in the CIP to make some appreciable improvements here. Next, please. Strategic priority number four, infrastructure. We could go all over the place here, but I will say this. I thought the Lincoln and Thomas Pump Station was going to be the biggest CIP investment we've made in recent history. That is, until we started to learn more and more about the BioSolids dryer. So in one CIP, essentially, we have a huge investment that is, I think, a good investment at wastewater for the BioSolids dryer. That's going to help us be compliant with looming regulatory tightening, let's call it, that's especially, you know, with PFAS and some other things that are coming down the pipeline in terms of just regulations. And that's going to set us up for success in, in that regard. And so thank you for, for taking on it on because that's a significant undertaking. I wanted to mention Pioneer Road because there's been a lot of work done behind the scenes to get ready for this next phase. We're, we're partners with the county. The county's got the lead here, but this summer, there's going to be another chunk of Pioneer Road improved, and that's going to be from County Highway V where the traffic circle is, down past Tyson. And I think that's a really important piece because right there, you're kind of in the wild if you're a kid trying to get from the traffic circle area where there's a neighborhood down to Tyson. Not good sidewalks, there's going to be a running trail there. That's going to be a really nice improvement. And we're going to continue that on in the future, but that's, that's where we're going to be in 2024. Great outcome at the police department, big undertaking, lot of moving pieces to get this first phase complete of the remodel. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't mention And then I'd be remiss if I didn't mention lead service lines, you know, that continues sort of behind the scenes. We've got a pretty significant effort underway this coming year in 2024, really excited about that. And then I added this last piece when we got confirmation last week that we made the cut for the corridor ID program with the U.S. Department of Transportation. You know, had we not made that cut, we're out of the game, but we made the cut. It comes with some money to help us further planning with our partner cities up and down the line between Milwaukee and Green Bay, but it's exciting because, you know, it's a long-term undertaking to see if we can make the ultimate cut for passenger rail, but it means we're going to have some good partners along the way with the cities up and down the line, and a lot of good planning and a lot of good effort. I imagine this is probably a seven to 10-year undertaking as well, but, you know, we're talking about a lot of work between where we are right now, which is feeling successful, and where we need to be to stay successful. And so, a lot of conversations to come, but that's a good outcome so far. Next, please. Now, this one, I'm going to skip over some of these and let you read many of the bullet points because there's a number of slides here. I was teasing Diane and Tricia earlier today, I said I'm going to break all my rules and put everything I'm thinking about in these slides because there's just so much goodness here. And I want to start by highlighting the Transit Certificate of Excellence. That's a hard one to get, and when you see Lynn Gillis come before you in a few weeks to get her retirement key to the city, I mean, what an awesome way to go out. So, this is really exciting. This is a great outcome. She's really done a lot for that organization. But I'll just let you look at those, and the last bullet I put there, you know, I put that there because it is a tough employment environment out there, and our human resources office is doing great service for all the departments, but it's especially devoted to helping our police department continue to recruit in a really difficult environment, and Chief Goldstein and his team have had a really successful 2023. Maggie, let's go to the next one. Thanks to Kat and her team because this room now, for the first time, has high def, and it's going to give us the opportunity, I sent you a note, I think, saying that the first meeting in January, we're also going to be live streaming and providing on-demand on YouTube. Well, you don't want to do that in standard def, it looks really junky. It's all, that's also going to give us the opportunity to have closed captioning. But a lot of work goes into making this room work right, and making this all high-def, I think, was a really good improvement because people can watch these meetings on their phone and they can read this, they can read this now, and that's a good thing. They couldn't do that in standard def. I mentioned the second point because there's been a lot of work go into improving the quality of our communications on social media, but also the quantity and how we're approaching that. So, I've seen some great quality and some great work at fire rescue, police, transit, social, pardon me, senior center, but also the main city feed as well. And, you know, I could take any one of those measurements, but I didn't want to drown you with numbers, but on the main city feed, we've seen a, you know, almost two-thirds increase in interactions just this year as a result of some of those efforts. I hit you in the middle there with no mo mai. I think people who have participated were really glad to. I think it's worth doing again. I think that people who participated weren't in conflict with their neighbors. That was one thing I was a little bit worried about, but I thought that was a good outcome. So, I wanted to call that out. And then lastly, you know, the great outcome for our wastewater treatment plant, you know, great accolade there, and I already talked about the, you know, when we were talking about budget, you might wonder why I'm not talking about it again now because that's a huge thing and what we've done with reduction in the use of our financial reserve, but we talked enough about that when we were talking about the budget. So, let's go to the next slide. These things are kind of wordy because I was trying to explain some of the things that go on way behind the scenes with IT. These are really important, rarely mentioned and rarely appreciated publicly, but I wanted to say thanks especially to Kat and her team because there's a lot of work that goes on every day to make sure our network is secure with all the information that's on our network. And then there's a lot of grunt work that goes into changing out the cameras and making the improvements that have been made around the city with those cameras because you've got to climb up on towers, you've got to, you know, get up on poles, you've got to do all sorts of things to make all that work, and then to make sure that they're all connected correctly and working well. We've got fiber expansion that we've been doing, fiber expansion that we're going to be doing, and thank you for the funding you've made for those efforts too. Next, please. Lot of great things at the library. You know, we're moving the branch around the corner out there by the festival grocery. So, John Marks juggling glass balls while also moving, and so, a lot of great things there, a lot of great success last summer, going to have more great success this summer with the summer reading, and still serving a lot of people. It's really fantastic. We're on the brink of starting the solar project, and John Marks, I think, fair to say you're really proud of what's gone on with Kanapi and the reception you've had with that. So, thank you to the library, the library board and all the team at the library for the great things going on over there. Next, please. We all talked about this, but I wanted to show it to you graphically. You know, we were, over the past 20-plus years, shared revenue was getting whittled away, it was getting dangerously low, and the legislature did a great thing, I thought, this year, and I really appreciate when the governor signed that law that created this supplemental to the shared revenue. So, you can see that we're back to where we were just a little bit better off than where we were at the start of the century, but, you know, we adapted over the course of the last 23 years, so it wasn't like we were going broke, but things were getting a lot tighter over the course of time, and this was a, this was a great outcome since it is our second-largest source of revenue. It looks like the state legislature is going to hold the line on this and make sure that, you know, everything that was created to fund the supplemental revenue from sales tax is going to remain so. Next, please. You know, in terms of everything I just described, you know, all of this needs to keep happening every day, and I didn't mention it, but it was on the slide. I thought it was really great news. We've tested for PFAS quite a bit, and on the slide, it said we'd had no detects in our monitoring, and that's a great outcome. But in any event, a lot of good work here, lot of, lot of, lot of effort going into making sure we've got that excellence in operations. Next, please. So, we do have some challenges. Talk about population. I will say that last year was the first year that there were fewer than 1,000 births in the, in Fond du Lac County as far back as I can, I can track. We broke through the 1,000 barrier last year, meaning we broke below it. And so, that's going on all over the state, and meanwhile, you know, we need as a state, I think, to, and I'm encouraging you to also voice this need, we need as a state to keep making sure that we're inviting people who want to move to Wisconsin because no local government is going to influence people to have more babies, but we can influence, you know, the state and our own community to be super attractive to get people to move here, and part of that's with housing. So, we need to keep working on that. There's no doubt that that third point I've put up there, it's incredibly concerning. It affects law enforcement. We will have applied more Narcan via our paramedic responses this year than in any year prior. People are using drugs that kill them on the first use if they overdose, and they don't get help, and this is a really huge challenge. And it contributes to a lot of other things too, violence and whether it's domestic violence or criminal violence, you know, with theft or other things. And so, we, this is something that, you know, our police department's focused on and our fire rescue's trained for, but it is a challenge. Tight labor market, I'm not telling you anything you don't know there. Inflation, it seems that, for the time being, it has been tamed somewhat, but you can see in the graphic that I put up, on the right, you see the peak there in 2022, it's higher than it had been basically for the entire century. So, I mean, inflation has had a big effect on everything, not just housing, like I've already talked about, not just sales tax revenue, but, you know, whether or not people feel like they're making enough money, frankly. I mean, it's had a big effect, and it's also affected our budget too. I mean, we've had to pay very close attention to that. So, why did I put elections as a challenge? I put elections as a challenge because after 2020, people like Maggie after being accused of, you know, being part of a conspiracy, just to be frank about it, and we, I think, I would urge you to help us tell the good story of the good people that we have working at the polls, who are working with integrity. That includes Maggie and her paid staff, you know, her clerk team, as well as our county clerk too. You know, I think it's important that we help our citizenry understand that we're running elections at a high degree of integrity here in the city of Fond du Lac and our county too, but I think there's going to be some challenges with that, it appears, in terms of what the perception of all of that is. And so, I think it's important that if you hear any concerns, please pass them on to us because we want to address those to make sure that people are getting questions answered if they have any questions about that. Maggie, let's go to the next. Okay, I think we should be right at 7 o'clock, and I ask if you have any questions or comments. Again, I want to thank you for all of your support because, you know, I'm just scraping the surface here. There's a lot of other things that have gone on in 2023 and will go on in 2024, but I thank you for all the authority and support that you've given to us and the leeway to do these things. So, thanks for all of that. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Heiser.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Excellent overview. Let's go to questions from council. Ms. Ricky O'Neal, first.
No question, just a comment. I return, I'm sure all of ours, thanks to all of you, the department heads, all your staffs, Mr. Moore. I think we have great leadership in this city, and we do incredible things for 300 and full-time employees. So, thanks. Take those things back to your staff and to yourself.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Thank you, President Heiser. Just a quick hitter, I get asked a lot what makes a good council, and I always say an even better city staff, and, I mean, all of this is credited to you guys, and I truly mean that. So, thank you. Special shout-out to the parks, Paul DeBree's. I have a lot of people walking up to me saying, I can't remember the last time we've done this much good in parks, and it's being recognized a lot. I mean, people just randomly pulling me aside, so thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Cassidy?
I just wanted to point out one thing. When you said 3% unemployment, that is really full unemployment. That means that everybody that wants a job has a job. So, that may be a little looked at differently, but 3% is really full unemployment, or full employment, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Anything further from council? Ms. Brawd?
Well, see if I still have some voice, because I don't think I saw this on your side about the library, but I also wanted to highlight the Hope on the Block, which is just an incredible partnership that the library has a space that volunteers are constantly restocking that community pantry that is providing resources to anybody who needs them, and just, you know, in addition to having the Warming Shelter, having that resource there, it's just incredible to see the outpouring of the community for that, and I wanted to thank John Marks and the library for being able to host that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brawd. Anything further from council? All right, with nothing further, I just want to say thank you again, Mr. Moore, for an excellent overview, and I encourage you next year, put all the information in the slides. We like the slides. It was, it was, it was long, but it was rewarding. Let's put it that way. It was a, was a nice way to end the year, okay? Let's go with that. And thank you again to all of our wonderful city staff, and also, I want to wish a Merry Christmas to all of, all the folks at home who've chimed in with their questions and comments, and it's an honor to serve all of you. This council is very proud to represent the city of Fond du Lac. I know I can speak to that for all of us. With that being said, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Zimmerman. Knew I could count on you. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullen. This is not debatable. Please proceed to vote. And that passes. We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.